We're ready? Good afternoon. It's 4:30 PM on Tuesday, March 16th. We'll go ahead and call the City Council meeting to order for the city of New Ulm. Item number 1.1, Public Notice to Conduct Meeting by Teleconference. No one is joining remotely today, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number two, Consent Agenda. Counselors, what are your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 3.1, 2021 Appointment of the City Council for New Assistant City Attorneys.
Council, resident councilors, before you have the appointments of four new assistant city attorneys, that would be Michael Boyle, Jeremy Berg, Paul Gunderson, and Mary K. Magus. That would be effective April 1st, 2021.
Being it was presented to us at the last, presented to us at the last council meeting, I'll make the motion to approve the 2021 appointment of the City Council for Assist- Assistant City Attorneys Charter, Section 64, as follows. Michael Boyle, Jeremy Berg, Paul Gunderson, and Mary K. Magus.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 4.1, Raffles Gambling Permit for Sioux Trails Ducks Unlimited.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, this is new. We are going to be doing some reports and updates from some of our committee meetings. So we, it'll be a summary of business conducted during board and commission meetings. And I will ask if any of the counselors have any updates they would like to share.
Madam Chair, I'd be glad to start. And as you stated, this is new. And for those that are watching, a lot of us, a lot of folks know that we attend, as counselors, attend these council meetings twice a month, but we also get appointed and assigned to a variety of different committees. And a lot of times, we don't hear what's going on on another counselor's committees that they're appointed to. So we've started this tonight. I'll only be on the second meeting of the month, for people just to give a brief update on any committees that they're working on or attending. So I'll go ahead and start. I just have a few. Last week, I attended the National League of Cities Virtual Conference. The takeaways for me were a couple that I thought were important. We actually had Dr. Fauci doing a presentation and question and answers about what city leaders should be doing at this current time. And his response was that we have a very important role coming up, that city leaders need to take charge and need to have a face in making sure people get shots, but knowing where to go to get those shots, knowing why those shots are important. And it needs to come from our mayor and from our city leaders. So I thought was a great takeaway. I think it's important that we take a look at that. I have talked with our city manager about that as well, and we're working on that. The other thing that came up with Transportation Committee was electronic cars. And I was kind of surprised by hearing about it, but every developed nation is working on electronic, electric cars. And as we're developing our infrastructure, as we are looking at our plans, comprehensive plans, that we should be looking at that and considering that, because that is what's happening, what is in our future, that we should be looking at that. So just something that we should be keeping in mind. We had a presentation from PayPal that I thought did a really nice job about, they provide a lot more than just loans. They actually did quite a bit during COVID times in providing funding to large and small cities. That's it from that particular conference. EDA, last month, that Andrea and I attended, there was a lot of talk about a Get It Ready program for family rehab loan pilot, $120,000 designed for homes that need significant work, like roofing, electrical, heating, structural. Minimum is $5,000, maximum is $40,000. It's a 2% interest over 10 years. So if people have an interest in that, contact City Hall. In the chamber, I sit as a liaison in the chamber. I don't have voting rights or anything. But they're looking at hiring a part-time events person. As you know, with the loss of a lot of their events, they lost a lot of revenue. And Michael Loft is the main full-time person there with a few part-timers. And so they are looking at maybe bringing back a part-time events person to handle some of the larger events. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll give just a minor update on the Heritage Preservation Commission. We actually met last night, Monday night, the first time in several months. One item, we did a quick approval of window replacement at 211 North Minnesota Street. But one more important item, we're all aware about Herman Monument. The building official gave us an update last night. I mean, we're getting close. We're not a designated landmark yet. He's been dealing with the state Historic Preservation Society. One of their comments was actually, we might be better off taking him down and rebuilding him. So that is on the horizon. The landmark deal kind of took a backseat with the COVID going on, so we're nowhere close to that yet. We do want to get that because that makes us a lot more publicized. Herman statue is in New Ulm, and easier getting grants that way, because we, we know that a $10 bill is not going to fix Herman. The Park and Rec Commission, actually, I'll wait with that update because this whole agenda is full of park and rec and the matrix, so we'll get to that. And CBB, you actually covered some of those items, so that's it.
Thank you. I guess we'll go down the line here. I am a member of the Region 9, Commissioner for that 9-county group, and I'm still getting my feet wet and learning. That's a rather large group of us. But as part of my role with Region 9, I am also on, a member of the Climate Smart Municipalities. And so I'm the first one from New Ulm to be joining. But what is interesting is that we're partnering, that group partners with Germany. So learning to see what they're doing over there and what they're implementing over here. So we've already seen some progress from cities like White Bear Lake and Rochester to see what they're doing as far as becoming more green. And I am excited to be learning from them and bringing some of those initiatives our way. Thank you.
I serve on the Planning Commission, and I'm further on the agenda here. We're going to be talking about the parks. So we'll go back into that detail on that aspect. So otherwise, I have nothing.
And I sit on the, as representation for the Brown County Solid Waste Advisory Board. The county dump, the Brown County landfill, they are looking at doing some pretty good restructuring of their driveways, as well as adding a machine shed within the next year here to make entrance and exiting much safer out there, which was, was very, very smart, but it's very well detailed. And they're getting ideas and bids right now. But some changes coming at the Brown County landfill, so.
Thank you for those updates. Do we need a motion to file these reports? Okay, may I get a motion to accept these updates as presented?
So.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 6.1, Planning Commission Recommendation on Park Improvement Locations.
Madam President, members of the City Council, Dave Schnoberg, Community Development Director. The Planning Commission unanimously took this action that we're going to be talking about at their February 25th meeting. I'd first like to begin by talking a little bit about the responsibilities and powers of the, of the Planning Commission when it comes to what their role is within the community with planning-related activities. State statutes designates the Planning Commission as the city's planning agency. In that capacity, they are responsible for the preparation and amendment of the city's comprehensive plan, subject to having available funding. And as part of that responsibility with the comprehensive plan, they are to consult with and coordinate the planning activities of other departments and agencies of the city, and to ensure conformity with and to assist with the development of the comprehensive plan. Now, the comprehensive plan has three main parts, land use, street system, and parks and trails. And I'd just like to briefly touch on the parks and trails section. There are four purposes that are identified in the comprehensive plan. I'd like to note two of those. One of them is to guide the Park and Recreation Commission, the Planning Commission, and City Council in acquiring land for new parks. So that's one of the purposes of the comprehensive plan. Another purpose is to help guide decision-making regarding improvements to existing, underdeveloped, and undeveloped parks. Now, the next park, or the next neighborhood park initiative that the Park and Recreation Commission has undertaken is the result of requests made by residents in the Upper Cottonwood Street area. And as a result of that, the Planning Commission became aware of that and thought that, given their responsibilities that are assigned by the comprehensive plan, that they should also participate in this process. And so the Planning Commission considered this matter at four different meetings. I would note that the definition of a neighborhood park, it has three features. It's supposed to have a shelter, playground equipment, and an open field area. Now, prior to making any decisions on this subject, the Planning Commission viewed zoning and land use maps, as well as other associated planning material. And they also did site visits. And the map that they primarily used in their consideration of this matter is the one that you see on the, on the screen. That particular map shows the two different types of circles, one in red and one in black. The black represent areas that the Park and Recreation Commission considered for designation as the next neighborhood park. And the red circles represent future park areas that were identified in the city's comprehensive plan. And so on the map, the areas that are in yellow are low-density residential areas. The areas that are in orange are medium density. And the areas that are in brown are high-density. Now, the Planning Commission, in considering this particular matter, decided that the comprehensive plan and its land use map should be the tool that should be used to identify areas that were in greatest need of park improvements. And so this is the document that they, that they used. Now, the, at the February 25th meeting, the Commission's recommendation was that Upper Cottonwood was ranked the highest area. Second one was the Pollinator Park on North Broadway. The third was Maplewood Park, and the fourth was Lakeside Village. Now, the Commission delayed a month in making their decision, but at the previous month's meeting, which was January 28th, they had taken an actual vote and assigned a numerical value to their selections. And at that time, Upper Cottonwood had 16 points, and Lakeside Village had eight points. So Upper Cottonwood very clearly was the highest-rated area in the community in need of park improvements. Three staff members also participated in this process. It was myself, John Isley, our planner, and Joe Stotheim, city engineer. And we did this independently, with no prior discussion, and we all came up with the same ranking. And we all had Upper Cottonwood as a top-rated area as well. Maplewood is second, and South Market as third. Now, there's some other comments that staff would like to provide on this matter. One of them is that the Upper Cottonwood area, its closest proximity to another neighborhood park is 2.4 miles, that's Lincoln Park. If you look at South Park, that's about a mile and a quarter away. But both of those locations would require someone, if they're walking or they're biking, to actually walk along the highway. Or hopefully, you wouldn't do that, but you would be on an unimproved shoulder for that purpose. And so it's really not safe. The Upper Cottonwood area is also subject to flooding. Cottonwood River periodically goes out, and it seems like the frequency, because of the types of rainfall that we've been receiving, that it's going out more often. And the, as a result, you know, people have to take the long way into town, or a longer way into town. And so, and the flood events take place in the spring, summertime. So that makes it, again, more difficult for them. And then we took the time to look at previous acquisitions of property by the city for park purposes in developing residential areas. And we went back about 20 years, and we came up with seven different locations. And we've acquired property a variety of different ways. We've acquired it by plat dedication. We've acquired it by tax forfeiture. We had a county road relocation that resulted in a new park. And then we've had financing provided by a bond sale. And then we had purchases made directly from the Park and Recreation Department Fund. So a lot of different methods of financing. Of the seven areas that we, we identified, six of them are north of Center Street. And those have been acquired for, again, there were a variety of different reasons. But, you know, there has been more purchases on the north side of town than, than there has been on the south side of town. Now, that does mirror where development's taking place. I think we need to recognize that. But nonetheless, we do have, you know, residential development opportunities and existing development on the south end of town. The other thing I would like to note is that in some parts of the community, residents have access to schools. Schools sometimes have playground equipment. They've got field areas. And so there's, sometimes that the park need is met by those kind of facilities. But again, when you look at the Upper Cottonwood area, they don't have that type of access to those types of facilities. So that would conclude my report, unless the council has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schnoberg. Will we be hearing more about this with the park and rec update as well?
I'll go ahead and receive an order filed recommendation from the Planning Commission identifying locations within the city within the greatest need for park improvements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Are there more? What's the next steps here? I know we keep hearing about it. We keep hearing about different options for South Park. What, what's the next step here?
Tom Schmitz, Park and Recreation Department. Next steps, counselors, are that you have a, an action for you this evening to consider a grant application for one of those park areas. And other aspects are simply that now we have some data, more information to guide planning, not only development and community development planning, but also budgetary planning.
Thank you. I just, you know, as we keep moving forward, I know that we have, we keep referring to a comprehensive plan that's 13 years old, and, and there's sections of it that are just outdated and, and don't fit with where our community is at this point. And that's why I'm glad we're going to start work on that this summer. So I, I get worried that some, we spend a lot of money on our parks, a lot of money. And, and in some ways, rightfully so. We need to have things for our kids to do and our families and grandparents. And, but I also get worried that we can't over-budget for simply parks, and we got a city to run. But I know that stuff that your park and rec group talks about, and, and it's coming up. So I'll leave it there.
I want to talk money.
I'll leave it there. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one other thing. And one of the recommendations from the comprehensive plan was that the Park and Recreation Department should establish a capital improvement plan, and should make some-
Figure it out.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dave.
You know, you, you make some assumptions as to what your revenues are going to be, and then you start to allocate money for park improvements, and you identify what those park locations are, and what those improvements are going to be. And so then you have a plan for the future.
You know, I'm going to chime in on the Community Development Director. It was part of it. Dave, you stole my thunder. But, okay, this is all great. I thank the Planning Commission. I thank the Park and Rec Commission for the matrix, the work and whatnot. They did do it. But eventually, it's going to come down to, as Counselor Scholz said, the almighty dollar. I mean, a lot of people have been talking on the street about, some people say, we have enough parks in the city of New Ulm. Do we actually need more? I mean, Counselor Scholz was right. We're in the top 5% in the state of Minnesota for what we spend on per capita people, our park and rec budget. I mean, yes, I know park departments are all run different in cities, but we spend an enormous amount of money. The one thing, you know, I read through the comp plan, went through that park and trail system, we're finally starting to do this, that the city will annually prepare and update a five-year plan that lists proposed projects that ought to be completed and address the needs, and it goes on and on. You know, normally, we just, park comes in with a capital improvement for that year. We either do it or we don't. Last year, budget was tough. No capital improvement. It, it's going to be a hard sell to people. Okay, let's move forward. I don't believe this budget year is going to be any better than last year. Where's the money going to come from? $207,000 we have in the park right now doesn't cover a lot. That won't even cover German park playground equipment. Am I correct, Tom? I think that was almost right. So my biggest concern is going to be, a lot of people saying, we have enough parks. I understand the need out there, Cottonwood, fitting the criteria. I understand that part. I believe once that, those people are in here, what have we got? Maplewood, this year, we're doing improvements on the road, correct? All right, we have a park out there. City, we're going to have to figure out, are we going to pay for this, the road improvement? Last time on Fender Avenue, it came out of the Parkland Dedication Fee. Are we going to use that or not? Or maybe Dave can comment on that.
No, I think maybe I'll refer to Nicole, but I only think part of the funding came out of the Parkland Dedication Fund.
There was a portion of it that came out of it.
Yeah, but the rest of it came out of-
The general fund also paid for a portion of it.
Right. I mean, that 207 is not going to go far. I mean, what's next you're going to bring? I mean, I hope we don't just jump the gun, like, I realize, people out there don't have access, whatnot. But I don't want to see us dipping into the general fund or whatnot to fund this one, and then, where New Ulm is growing on the north end, now those people start screaming.
And they are.
Yeah. Where's our park? So I mean, I realize, tonight, it's, it's all, we're accepting your stuff, but it's going to come back to us again and have to do some finance director. You're going to have to do some creative financing.
Well, I go back to what Charlie talked about, maybe a year ago, in this topic, that do we have land that we could get, could we could sell, and, and area that we're never going to develop, so why are we sitting on it? And, and I walk by Fender Park periodically, and, man, that's a big park. That's two and a half German parks. And I'm like, wow. And I know that's where the city was growing, and so is there going to be a future? Do we look 20, 30 years down the road, and that will become the big park up on the hill? And then there's German Park below the hill? I mean, and, and I would assume the committees are talking about that. If they are, that, that would be a gigantic park to develop. So could half of that be sold off, and the funds used to help develop some of the other parks in the city? I mean, that's kind of where Charlie was going. Are there other areas that could, we could take a look at to help develop? And I'm sure that's, that's the professionals here that can help guide us in that way.
One other comment I want to make with that, what Counselor Scholz said, at the Park and Rec Commission, and Tom, you did an excellent job explaining it to the board, all our different parks. But I want to use an example. Everybody knows Lincoln and Washington Park, right? 2.6 acres. That's it. And in this comp plan, it does say something about mini parks. We're always neighborhood park or better. Why do they have to be so large, the parks we're creating? The parks we're creating. That's something I'm missing, I mean, those two parks have served New Ulm's kids' entertainment for how many years, and now we're heading where, no, we have to have four to six acres. I guess I'm missing something with that. If we're gonna create parks, why do they all have to be four to six to 10 acres? I don't believe we have to provide a ball field, a soccer field, a swimming pool, a sh...
It's picketball, come on.
Well, I mean, it's gonna be some tough choices for this council with, do we wanna spend a lot of money, or come up with that five-year plan?
Council President and councilors, yes, you kinda brought up a really good point, and those are things that we would be looking at in the comprehensive plan, to look at some of these things that have been spelled out 13 years ago, to see if they're still hold true. Again, does there need to be a park every quarter of a mile? You know, does that have to hold true in the comp plan? Is there something else? Is it, does it have to be four to six acres, or is now a neighborhood park? Two acres, and your mini parks are, you know, a single lot in the middle of a neighborhood and stuff like that. So, those are things we can address, you know, moving forward and looking at, you know, our comp plan that is old and potentially outdated a little bit, to address the needs, and looking at, you know, again, land use and zoning and things like that, taking all those things into consideration.
Well, and I would like to see some progress made on park development. I know, you know, budgets, I know that per capita were one of the highest, but there, you know, there is some benefits that come to doing that, number one. And number two, I mean, there was a lot of time spent putting these matrices together. There was a lot of time and independent assessments being done, and it's basically all kinda pointing us in the same direction. So, I think it's important that we take that information and we use that to make some progress. I mean, clearly, the upper Cottonwood area would benefit from a park. You know, is it the first one on the list? You know, we know that it's not, but we have, we have this information, time was put into it. I know that we can find a way, and I'm looking forward to really looking at the comprehensive plan to see if there is some ways that we can move one area to help another, sell some land or make some small changes.
Guess I'm gonna chime in and ask Chris a couple of questions. When we were talking about the parks, probably a half year ago, we discussed the potential for Cottonwood Park up there, about some forfeiture land, and pursuing that, and maybe making a mini park. Has anything come forward on that?
So, I think that is choice number three on the matrix. It's still up there, but it's still in the top three. So, again, that'll be ultimately a council decision on which route you would like to go on that, whether it's going with the forfeiture, forfeited land, or acquiring the land. Again, as Dave, Dave Snowburg had mentioned, that you do have a grant application to look at for land acquisition up there, so that would be towards buying the two properties that were previously discussed in the upper Cottonwood area. So, again, that might be the stepping stone, where it's, again, it's a grant application that we would put out there, see if, what we're approved for, and then, you know, again, it's acquiring the land. And then, now that we've acquired our land, putting money aside to actually, you know, turn that into a park, you know, again, probably not gonna happen overnight, but something we can budget for, budget towards.
Thank you. We still have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Good discussion.
Motion and a second. Alden, favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto item number 6.2, the next Neighborhood Parks Matrix.
Thank you, President Betker and Commissioners, Councilors. You have before you a request to simply receive an order filed, the Park and Recreation Commission's Next Neighborhood Parks Matrix and Rankings as of their last meeting of March 8th. Okay, now, we wanna make sure we understand that these are neighborhood parks we're talking about, to serve a park service area, a neighborhood. There are other park classifications in our system, including single-use or special-use parks, such as the Dog Park, the Archery Range, the Trappin' Ski Range, the Pollinator Park. We also have natural resource areas, nature area parks, that are not classified as neighborhood parks. Nature areas such as Adams Park, Minicon Park, actually, South Market Park presently is an urban wilderness area. So, it's important to realize we're talking about resident neighborhoods here. These are neighborhood parks, a very specific type of park, to provide a shelter, a playground, and some open space, athletic space, multi-use space. Okay? So, in the overview, by the way, the Commission's recommendation was unanimous. All nine Park and Rec Commissioners were at their meeting this past Monday, and they all voted unanimously to adopt and forward on this recommended matrix. As far to the overview, the Commission and Department have been looking at this topic for over four years. In the past six months, it was in overdrive, high speed. We had three work sessions, multiple regular meetings, and a special meeting to pull this together. Thanks to a data analytics consultant, who happens to actually be a volunteer in our Park and Rec Commission, we were able to put this Excel spreadsheet matrix together. Now, it's important to realize there are approximately 14 areas in our community in the comprehensive plan that talk about neighborhood park needs. Six of those areas, we did not evaluate, we did not look at. Most of those are way out, 50 years out into the future. The only one that is not that far out into the future is North Garden Street or Wake, Wakes Park across from the senior high school, but that still is down the road quite a ways, because there are not streets and roads around that park area. So, the analysis, the matrix is divided up into three major categories, objective, subjective, and land. And all of these criteria were weighted, depending upon importance, as deemed by the Commission. So, if you just look at the overview, 5.0A, you see objective. Upper Cottonwood Street came out on top, if you just look at the objective criteria, and all the criteria are further down in the packet here. But you can see how the numbers shook out reviewing the objective criteria. We did not do the subjective criteria, so that wasn't even really considered, in the end, by the Commission. Land criteria scores are also there in the packet, and then a combination of land and objective, if you wanna put those together. But if you are making decisions in the future, you know, it might be important to consider objective and possibly objective only. Okay, so, in the end, the extreme south end of town, Upper Cottonwood Street area, and the extreme north end of town, whether it's Lakeside Village area or North Broadway, they both ranked high. And you could almost imagine, I mean, you could almost call them as basically tying. So, there you have before you kinda the report and the matrix, the list of objective criteria as far as whether it's in the comprehensive plan, the number of existing household units in the area, the number of potential household units that could be added to the area, the distance from the center of the service area to the nearest developed park, and the elevation difference, or the elevation challenge to get from the neighborhood to the nearest developed park. Also, the safety level along that route, proximity to utilities, and health factors, were all put into the objective criteria. So, you have the final scores, and this really is a tool, as I mentioned here in the overview, this is a tool that the, that the city will have for decades into the future. This matrix can be modified, it can be re-pointed, reranked, so it's really a fantastic tool that we'll have for decades in the future, as far as planning and evaluating objectively which neighborhoods, you know, may rank higher than the others, as far as need for a neighborhood park. So, really, that's the report. I'm just recommending that you receive an order filed. There will certainly be future discussion and proposed future action on this topic for the, both Commissions, and ultimately, the council down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Schmitz. I do have one question. So, health factors, I have medium and high here. Can you just kind of, all the other questions on the objective criteria are pretty clear, but can you just kind of expand on what those health factors are, and how you came up with the medium and high rankings, and what would be a low ranking, I guess?
Yes, President and Councilors, there were just three categories, high, medium, and low, and this was based upon data provided by the New Ulm Medical Center and the Alina System, as far as chronic, you know, concentrations of chronic disease. And so, you can see where parts of our community, park service areas, that had a, you know, a high incidence of chronic health conditions.
Thank you.
There were, none of these nine areas that were evaluated had a low incidence.
And again, Madam President, I wanna just thank the Park and Rec Commission. They went above and beyond, they did their homework, they actually went out and looked at all of our city parks, they actually know where they're at now, the Park and Rec staff too, for all the data, a lot of time and energy was spent on it. Thanks again.
I agree, you can tell there's a lot of work here. Tom, I had a question on, I was kinda surprised that this criteria didn't include, how many kids are gonna go to these parks? Now, it does say number of household units existing in the area. My assumption, there's some type of formula for that, but how many kids...
Yes.
Are in that area? What does that area consist of, by the way?
The park service area, according to our comprehensive plan, is a third of a mile in radius, so that's two-thirds of a mile in diameter, circle, in the comprehensive plan, park service areas.
Okay.
So, that would be neighborhoods, neighborhood parks would be proposed to be, you know, two-thirds of a mile apart.
And is there a child determination in that household, number of household units existing in the area?
We were not able to come up with the number of people, or children, or seniors in these service areas, so we went with household units. And so, we were not able to quantify the number of children in these geographic areas.
If I can maybe add to that answer, you know, as we age, we have neighborhoods that may have young ki, a lot of young kids, and 10 years later...
Yeah.
It's a completely different type of neighborhood. And so, when you make these kind of decisions, you're really making them for a much longer period of time. You're making them 50 to 100 years out.
Good point.
I mean, if you look at the original town plat of the city of New Ulm, what you find on it, North Park, South Park, Washington and Lincoln, they were all designated in 1858. Well, we didn't develop some of those parks until 1970. So, someone was looking ahead, and that's really what you have to do when you make these kind of decisions.
Very true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, this is great analytics and data that we can use for the future, so I don't see any reason to delay. I'll make a motion to receive an order, the Park and Recreation Commission's Next Neighborhood Parks Matrix and Rankings as of March 8th, 2021.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 7.1, German Park Amphitheater Shade Structure, Minnesota Bonding Bill Grant.
Thank you, President Betker and Councilors. You have before you just another formality. When you, when money is authorized by a Minnesota State Bonding Bill, that just begins a very long process of a legal agreement between the LGU, the local governmental unit, and the state of Minnesota. And this is one of many aspects of paperwork that we're gonna need to complete before we get reimbursed, that $300,000 from the state after the shade structure is installed and paid for. So, it's simply a resolution authorizing this process to move forward.
Again, at the March 8th, 2021, the Park and Rec Board unanimously recommend to the proposed action. One thing I do wanna mention, that this is one of those grants that no local mashing funds are required, and the $300,000 is anticipated to cover the cost. That one makes me happy.
So, are you offering the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution, we're either eating, accepting the $300,000 Minnesota Bonding Bill reimbursement grant, and authorize a grant agreement with the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economy Development for the shade structure on the top row of the German Park Amphitheater.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormcutt?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 8.1, Upper Cottonwood Park Grant Application.
Madam President, members of the City Council, the Park and Recreation Commission at their March 8th meeting unanimously recommended approval of the submittal of this particular grant application, and it's to the Department of Natural Resources, and it's for the purpose of establishing a neighborhood park in the upper Cottonwood area. The particular program that we are applying to is called the Outdoor Recreation Grant Program. It is offered by the Department of Natural Resources. Applications are due March 31st, and this is an annual application process. Grant awards are typically made in July of, would be made July of this year. The activities can start in the fall of this year and are to be completed by June 30th of 2023. The grants will reimburse up to 50% of the cost of the project. The project can consist of the acquisition of property, the development of parks, or the redevelopment of parks. The remaining 50% is called the local share, and that can be made either in the form of cash, or it can be made through in-kind services. So, for example, with this particular project, perhaps there are certain elements that can be done by city employees, and so then we can count that towards our local share, and what that does is that reduces our cash outlay for the project. And we've identified some activities already that we think we would be able to do that with. We are submitting, we would suggest that we submit an application for a total project of $266,000. So, of that amount, the city would be responsible for $133,000. That project would consist of the acquisition of two parcels of land, which would be 2.31 acres. We would also install an accessible playground piece of equipment. We are required to provide an ADA walkway to that playground, and then we would do some tree removal, we would install some new trees, and that would take care of it at this point in time, some point in time in the future. Obviously, the city can add additional improvements to the park. I would note that if we are successful in securing funding, and we make these purchases, that this is property then that in perpetuity is going to be park, a park area. We also do not have an obligation to accept an award if we should decide that that's not in our best interest. We've identified in the report reasons why we think we should proceed with the application process, and that would conclude the report, unless you have any questions.
I do have one for Mr. Snowburg. Okay, at the Park and Rec meeting, I had asked this question, okay, the land value, $100,000, correct?
It's an estimate.
Right, but we have to purchase the entire piece of the two properties, correct?
No.
Oh, they will subdivide those?
Well, we haven't gotten to negotiating with the property owners yet. The application is for 2.31 acres, that's, and so that's...
I'm just worried that this... I'm just worried that this will come back to us, that we have to buy the entire property, now we're looking at a $300,000 investment to get into the real estate business.
Well, if, if we're successful in receiving, you know, a grant award, then we would enter into negotiations with the property owners.
Okay.
And I guess we would, you know, cross that bridge when we, when we get to it.
Pretty competitive grant, I'm assuming?
Yes, it is. And we've had-
It's our chances, Dave, what's, what's, what's your, what do you think?
Well, I think we-
Remember, this is being recorded.
I, no, I think we have a good application. We've discussed this with personnel from the Department of Natural Resources. We sent our application up to them for their review, and we received their comments back, and they didn't really have a lot. We asked the individual we talked to, is this a project that has merit, and we were told that it did, so, but obviously, they can't fund everything, and, you know, so we'll see.
We'll find out. All right. Thank you for your work on this, I appreciate it.
Dave, I do have a question. Do you know, have you seen kind of a little bit of a history of these grants at all, and kind of what chances we have? I mean, obviously, there's always that worry that a lot of these dollars kind of go and stay in the metro, but I was just curious if we have a better shot, if you believe that, that we're more of a rural community?
I believe this program is solely for greater Minnesota.
Greater Minnesota, thank you.
David, have we applied in the past for this, these type of grants?
No, we haven't. To my knowledge, we haven't.
That probably helps us a little bit too, huh?
I would think so. And I would note that for application purposes, what we're indicating, that the city share would come from the Parkland Dedication Fund.
Do we have a resolution on this yet?
Yes, we do.
We do?
Yeah.
No, I don't think we have one, we need one.
We don't.
Right.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go ahead and offer a resolution, way of the reading, authorizing the submittal of an application for outdoor rec grant from the state of Minnesota Department of Natural Resources to finance the establishment of Upper Cottonwood Park.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormcock?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 8.2, Park and Recreation Donations.
Okay, again, I was in attendance at the March 8th meeting, and I'm going to offer the resolution, way of the reading, accepting donations offered to the city of Ulm through the Park and Rec Department, as outlined. General parks, $15.40 cash from Amy Magar, this was actually just an unused balance for a shelter rental, and then Riverside Park Environmental Learning Center and Artifact Inventory, $1,000 cash from Dennis and Kathy Born.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormcock?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. With no more new business, we will adjourn.